We are starting the webinar now. We're going live.
Welcome back everyone to the Capitola City Council Meeting. It is Thursday, June 10. And before we get this call literally, no kind of intent on the red ball, but we'll talk about that in a second. Chloe, would you like to say your words?
Absolutely. Thank you Mayor Brooks. Hello, welcome to the Capitola City Council Meeting. In accordance with the California Governor's Executive Order N 2920, this meeting is not physically open to the public, but council and staff are meeting via Zoom and there are several ways for the public to watch and participate. Information on how to join the meeting using Zoom or a landline mobile phone, along with how to submit public comment during the meeting tonight is available on our website, cityofcapitola.org, and on the published meeting agenda. The public can also stream the meeting live on our website. As always, the meeting is also Cablecast Live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel 8 and is being recorded to be rebroadcast on the following Wednesday at 8:00 a.m. and on Saturday, following the first rebroadcast at 1:00 p.m. on Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. Our technician tonight is Alice. Thank you so much, Mayor Brooks.
Thank you Chloe. Okay, and if you can please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Okay, we're now going to move on to item two. This is presentation. And I have the honor of introducing or proclaiming June 2021 as Elder Abuse Awareness Month. And I'd just like to read a few words from the proclamation this evening. So I'd like to present the City of Capitola's Mayor's Proclamation designating June 2021 Elder Abuse Awareness Month. Whereas today, a system of collaboration among the Human Services Department, Adult and Long-Term Care Services Division, the Santa Cruz County Sheriff's Department, the Capitola Police Department, the District Attorney, Senior's Council, the Long-Term Care Abundance Program, Public Guardian Program, and many community service partners to prevent abuse, protect victims, and prosecute offenders who abuse our elderly. And whereas we as a community come together each year to dedicate ourselves to providing a safe net for our elderly citizens to keep them safe from abuse, neglect, and exploitation. Now therefore, I, Yvette Brooks, Mayor of the City of Capitola, do hereby recognize June 15, 2021 as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day and do hereby proclaim the month of June to be Elder Abuse Awareness Month and encourage all citizens of the City of Capitola to join me in this observation. So thank you so much for the staff and for the folks who asked me to bring this forward today. I think they might have someone here who'd like to say a few words. Larry? Oh, is that you Gabriel?
Yes, good evening.
Hi.
My name is Gabriel Barazza. I'm a senior social worker with the County of Santa Cruz Adult Protective Services Team. And on behalf of the Adult Protective Services Team of Santa Cruz County, I would like to thank the City of Capitola for this proclamation. Our team investigates allegations of abuse, neglect, self-m neglect, and financial exploitation among older adults and dependent adults throughout the county. We partner with these older adults and dependent adults to offer them support, guidance, advocacy, and assistance navigating complex and challenging systems. We endeavor to reduce the risk and safety and enhance the safety for all community dwelling older and dependent adults in Santa Cruz County to make sure that our older residents can safely age in place, living in their own homes or any preferred location. The issue of elder abuse is significant, not just in terms of the impact to the individual and systems, but also the scale. This issue is certainly growing with an ever-increasing aging population. According to the National Council on Aging, roughly 10% of Americans over the age of 60 have experienced some form of elder abuse. Various studies estimate that the issues of self-m neglect adversely affect somewhere between 10% and 21% of American older adults. Keep in mind that these studies estimate that only four out of every 100 incidences of elder abuse is reported to authorities. So this highlights the importance of events like this, raising awareness about elder abuse and the programs that are designed to intervene with elder abuse. This will increase attention to the realities faced by many of the older adults living in our community. And this awareness can also ease fears around seeking help or support and hopefully that will create a community where we can all come together to work toward the elimination of elder abuse. Thank you again for this proclamation.
Thank you so much. It is an honor to be bringing this forward to this very, very important cause. Okay, now we're going to be moving on to item three.
Madam Mayor?
Oh.
Yeah, sure. I just wondered if I could make a comment?
Please.
Yeah, so I've been associated with the Senior Counsel, the advisory group, for some number of years. And one of the agencies that's part of the Senior Counsel is Senior Legal Services. And you know, since I run across a lot of people in this town, I've come across situations where seniors have been abused in legal issues. And that particular service, which is part of the Senior Counsel, has actually come to their aid. And believe me, if you're an elderly person trying to negotiate with a landlord or some other situation like that, having that kind of help, which is free, really is a great bonus. So I think Gabriel will shake his head.
Senior Legal is an extremely valuable partner in helping many of our clients to receive justice, whether it's through litigating with landlords who are sometimes not very responsive to the needs of senior citizens or helping us with elder abuse, financial abuse cases. They're extremely valuable.
Thanks Gabriel for bringing that up. You've had much more experience than I, but you know, when you need legal advice and these guys can help you, I've just seen so many cases where it's just been actually great. So thank you.
Gabriel, thank you again for your time this evening.
Sure, thank you guys.
Have a great night.
You too.
Okay, so now we're going to be moving on to item three. This is a report out on closed session. I'll turn this over to our city attorney.
Thank you Mayor Brooks. Closed session was held on the items listed on the agenda and direction was given to staff. No action was taken.
Thank you. Now on to item four for additional materials. Do you have any additional materials?
Yes, late this afternoon, council did receive one additional material regarding item 9E. Thank you.
Okay, now on to additions and deletions to the agenda. Do we have any additions and deletions?
Staff, no changes this evening?
Okay, thank you. And item six for oral communication on non-agenda items or consent items. Okay, so item seven for staff or city council comments. Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to share at the AMBAG meeting last night, the Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments, we had kind of our initial introduction to our sixth arena cycle that we're going to be entering in 2023. It'll run from 2023 to 2032, I believe it is. And over the next two years, we're going to be working towards receiving our actual arena allocation. And there's a lot of things that AMBAG is going to be doing. They have fantastic staff that's willing to come and present to us on this process leading into our sixth arena cycle. A lot of the jurisdictions throughout the state are already getting some preliminary numbers and they're seeing their arena numbers sometimes double or more. And so we can anticipate that we may be seeing some really high numbers in this coming cycle. So I just wanted to share that that is something that AMBAG started the process of last night. We are in early consultation with HCD on our sixth cycle and there's going to be a lot going on between now and 2023. So I just wanted to share that as just an update. And if anyone is interested in having AMBAG staff come to present to us on this process leading into this sixth arena cycle, that she has offered to do that if we are interested. And that's all from me.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor Story.
Yeah, thank you Mayor Brooks. I wanted to report to the council from the last meeting of the Art Cultural Commission, particularly concerning the items concerning banners.
Channel eight and is being recorded to be rebroadcast on the following Wednesday at eight AM and on Saturday, following the first rebroadcast at one PM on Charter Channel seventy-one and Comcast Channel twenty-five. Our technician tonight is Alice. Thank you so much, Mayor Brooks.
Thank you, Chloe. Okay, and if you can please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Okay, we're now going to move on to item two. This is presentation, and I have the honor of introducing or proclaiming June twenty-twenty-one as Elder Abuse Awareness Month, and I'd just like to read a few words from the proclamation this evening. So I'd like to present the City of Capitola's Mayor's Proclamation designating June twenty-twenty-one Elder Abuse Awareness Month, where as today, a system of collaboration among the Human Services Department, Adult and Long-Term Care Services Division, the Santa Cruz County Sheriff's Department, the Capitola Police Department, the District Attorney, Seniors' Council, the Long-Term Care Abundance Program, Public Guardian Program, and many community service partners to prevent abuse, protect victims, and prosecute offenders who abuse our elderly. And whereas we as a community come together each year to dedicate ourselves to providing a safe net for our elderly citizens to keep them safe from abuse, neglect, and exploitation. Now therefore, I, Yvette Brooks, Mayor of the City of Capitola, do hereby recognize June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, and do hereby proclaim the month of June to be Elder Abuse Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens of the City of Capitola to join me in this observation. So thank you so much for the staff and for the folks who asked me to bring this forward today. I think we might have someone here who'd like to say a few words. Larry, oh, is that you, Gabriel?
Yes, good evening.
Hi.
My name is Gabriel Barazza. I'm a senior social worker with the County of Santa Cruz Adult Protective Services Team, and on behalf of the Adult Protective Services Team of Santa Cruz County, I would like to thank the City of Capitola for this proclamation. Our team investigates allegations of abuse, neglect, self-neglect, and financial exploitation among older adults and dependent adults throughout the county. We partner with these older adults and dependent adults to offer them support, guidance, advocacy, and assistance navigating complex and challenging systems. We endeavor to reduce the risk and safety and enhance the safety for all community-dwelling older and dependent adults in Santa Cruz County to make sure that our older residents can safely age in place, living in their own homes or any preferred location. The issue of elder abuse is significant, not just in terms of the impact to the individual and systems, but also the scale. This issue is certainly growing with an ever-increasing aging population. According to the National Council on Aging, roughly ten percent of Americans over the age of sixty have experienced some form of elder abuse. Various studies estimate that the issues of self-neglect adversely affect somewhere between ten and twenty-one percent of American older adults. Keep in mind that these studies estimate that only four out of every one hundred incidences of elder abuse is reported to authorities. So this highlights the importance of events like this, raising awareness about elder abuse and the programs that are designed to intervene with elder abuse. This will increase attention to the realities faced by many of the older adults living in our community, and this awareness can also ease fears around seeking help or support, and hopefully they'll create a community where we can all come together to work toward the elimination of elder abuse. Thank you again for this proclamation.
Thank you so much. It is an honor to be bringing this forward to this very, very important cause. Okay, now we're going to be moving on to item three.
Mayor?
Oh. Is that?
Yeah, sure. I just wonder if I can make a comment?
Please.
Yeah, so I've been associated with the Senior Counsel, the advisory group, for some number of years, and one of the agencies that's part of the Senior Counsel is Senior Legal Services. And, you know, since I run across a lot of people in this town, I've come across situations where seniors have been abused in legal issues, and that particular service, which is part of the Senior Counsel, has actually come to their aid. And believe me, if you're an elderly person trying to negotiate with a landlord or some other situation like that, having that kind of help, which is free, really is a great bonus. So I think Gabriel will shake his head.
Senior Legal is an extremely valuable partner in helping many of our clients to receive justice, whether it's through litigating with landlords who are sometimes not very responsive to the needs of senior citizens, or helping us with elder abuse, financial abuse cases, they're extremely valuable.
Thanks, Gabriel, for bringing that up. You've had much more experience than I, but, you know, when you need legal advice and these guys could help you, I've just seen so many cases where it's just been actually great. So thank you.
Gabriel, thank you again for your time this evening.
Sure, thank you, guys.
Have a great night.
You, too.
Okay, so now we're going to be moving on to item three. This is a report out on closed session. I'll turn this over to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Brooks. Closed session was held on the items listed on the agenda, and direction was given to staff, no action was taken.
Thank you. Now on to item four for additional materials. Do you have any additional materials?
Yes, late this afternoon, council did receive one additional material regarding item nine E. Thank you.
Okay, now on to additions and deletions to the agenda. Do we have any additions and deletions?
Staff has no changes this evening.
Okay, thank you. And item six for oral communication on non-agenda items or consent items. Okay. So item seven for staff or city council comments. Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to share, at the AMBAG meeting last night, the Association of Monterey Bay Area Government, we had kind of our initial introduction to our sixth arena cycle that we're going to be entering in twenty-twenty-three. It'll run from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-thirty-two, I believe it is. And over the next two years, we're going to be working towards receiving our actual arena allocation, and there's a lot of things that AMBAG is going to be doing. They have fantastic staff that's willing to come and present to us on this process leading into our sixth arena cycle. A lot of the jurisdictions throughout the state are already getting some preliminary numbers, and they're seeing their arena numbers sometimes double or more, and so we can anticipate that we may be seeing some really high numbers in this coming cycle. So I just wanted to share that that is something that AMBAG started the process of last night. We are in early consultation with HCD on our sixth cycle, and there's going to be a lot going on between now and twenty-twenty-three. So I just wanted to share that as just an update, and if anyone is interested in having AMBAG staff come to present to us on this process leading into this sixth arena cycle, that she has offered to do that if we are interested. And that's all from me.
Thank you, Councilmember Vice Mayor Story.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Brooks. I wanted to report to the council from the last meeting of the Arts Cultural Commission, particularly concerning the item concerning banners in the village. As the council may recall, the BIA had proposed some banners at a few meetings, a few weeks ago. The council referred that item to the Arts Commission. The Arts Commission met with representatives from the BIA, and they, in collaboration, had proposed a pilot project of submitting, let's call them dual banners, where the BIA would develop some banners that would meet their needs in terms of marketing, and the Arts Commission would share some banners that would include art that they would choose. For example, maybe the winner of the annual plein air art exhibit would be represented on one of the banners. But, you know, there was a potential, there's a lot of potential to that idea, but they were going to start with just a small pilot program to see how, you know, it may be received. The most difficult issue was concerning timing, because the BIA, with the summer season coming up, was eager to move fairly quickly, but because the council, you know, does not have a meeting in July, and in June twenty-fourth is the next meeting before, you know, almost another month break, that we would try to have our, the commission and the BIA would have renderings or templates developed, and would present something at the June twenty-fourth council meeting for consideration. So I just wanted to give you an update on that. Thank you.
You, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Bertrand. Okay, I just had a quick announcement that on June seventeenth, myself and the three other mayors, everything's okay, the light just dropped. June seventeenth, six PM, myself and the three other mayors will be holding a Mayor's Town Hall Series, and it's going to be hosted by Thomas Sage Peterson for Speak the Change podcast. Okay, any other comments? Councilmember Bertrand, you put your hand down. Okay. So now we're going to move on to item eight, consent items. All items listed on consent will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussions on these items prior to the time the council votes on the actions, unless a member of the city council requests a specific item to be discussed separately. Would any council members like to pull an item? Vice Mayor Story.
I wasn't asking to pull an item, but I have a conflict on item F, since I am a member of the BIA and subject to the assessment fees, that I would like to ask for a separate vote on that item so that I can recuse myself. Thank you.
Okay. Great, so can I have a motion then for consent items eight A through E? Okay, I have a first and a second from Vice Mayor Story, and a second from Councilmember Bertrand for item eight A through E. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Vice, excuse me, just trying to catch up here. Councilmember Bertrand.
I agree.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story.
Aye.
And Mayor Brooks.
Aye.
Okay, now can I have a motion for item eight F?
Move for eight F.
I have a first, and I have a second from Councilmember Peterson for item eight F. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Bertrand.
I agree.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story is recused, and Mayor Brooks.
Aye. Okay, you'll have to forgive that item passes with a four one, and if you'll forgive me, I did not ask if there were any staff comments. I'm going to go ahead and go back to item seven for staff comments. Do we have any comments from our staff?
I do. We have, I think, three different comments, and I will keep it relatively short. The first one is, as I mentioned at our last meeting, the library is going to be hosting its virtual grand opening, is coming Saturday at ten AM. Everybody is welcome to attend virtually. The mayor, myself, as well as a few other dignitaries, will be speaking, so make sure you tune in. We're all really excited to see, we've got some great coverage today in the newspaper about the new library. The second thing I was going to share with the community was, as came up earlier this evening, was there is a giant red ball in town that you may have noticed. So this ball is a fifteen-foot exhibit that actually has been traveling around the globe for several years, been shown in more than twenty-six cities and, I think, three different continents. And it's really intended to just be a sort of a fun, well-traveled piece of public art that moves around the community, and we were lucky enough to get it here in Capitola today. The ball is going to be moving tomorrow to Watsonville, and then over the weekend, it's going to be going to Santa Cruz, where it'll be at the mall to help them celebrate their twenty-fifth year anniversary, as well as, I think, down on the beach one day. So that's what the big red ball was that you saw out there today, really fun, and you can look it up, a Big Red Ball Project online if you want to learn more. And then lastly, I think our Public Works Director has another short item to share.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to announce, and I think everybody might know already, that we are working on a program to kind of develop a formal program for the outdoor dining that is going on in the village. One of the items we're trying to collect information is a public information, public opinion on the outdoor dining. We currently have a public opinion poll that is out and will be open for another week and a half or so, and information to get to that poll is contained on our website at Right on the front page, you'll see it says, "Public Outdoor Dining Opinion." Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize again for skipping over. We have so many great things from staff this evening, so again, my apologies. Okay, so we're going to go back to item nine, General Government, nine A, we're going to receive an update on the pandemic.
All right, so I'll be covering that this evening. Let's see if I can pull up the slides. Can folks see my screen?
We can.
Great. All right, so this is a chart that I think everybody is well familiar with, and it shows the Epi curve for our county. Interestingly, it is, not interestingly, great news is that you can see we are essentially, very few cases have been cropping up here in recent weeks. We are currently down to forty-seven known active cases, which is quite an interesting number, because when we went back and looked at our COVID updates that we've been providing to council for the last year, we found that almost exactly a year ago, this is what our Epi curve looked like for the county, and we had fifty active known cases. And so when you go back to the prior slide, you can see this is March, April, May, June, that would be this timeframe in here. And so you can see, obviously, the scale of the chart changed as we had moved forward, as we ended up with days with many more cases than we saw initially. And the great news is that the fifty active known cases at that point was moving up, and it was getting to be a high, and we've had more than that throughout almost the entire pandemic, and we are now back down below it almost a year later. So there's an interesting symmetry there. This is the case count for the state of California. You can see the really significant peak we had this winter, and really a steady decrease all the way down to where we are now with a real low point. We're back down to the numbers of like last March. These are the national case numbers. Again, you can see the real heavy winter peak. There was a bit of a surge, it was primarily in the northwest, both the Pacific Northwest, as well as some of Michigan and Minnesota, some states in that vicinity, but at this point, almost all the states are doing quite well. You do see a little bit of a tail increase there right at the end, and I think that that may be somewhat due to the Memorial Day, the way the data are collected over the holidays, as well as, I think, Texas may have done a data dump today and added a bunch of cases. Here's a little bit of information. This is from the LA Times. They have a vaccine tracker by county, and it shows the vaccination rates by county. You can see how Santa Cruz and the other Bay Area counties are really leading the way, along with San Diego, and then tiny Alpine County up there in the mountains. Coastal California generally has much higher vaccination rates than the inland areas. Almost all the high numbers are out of Marin, San Francisco, Santa Clara County. The overall statewide vaccination number is fifty-eight point three percent of the state. In Santa Cruz County, we're at sixty-three percent of the counties so far has been vaccinated, which is great news. And in addition, the county recently launched a new vaccination dashboard, which shows vaccination rates by zip code, and you can see here in the graphic, the Capitola zip code, nine-five-oh-one-oh, actually has the highest vaccination rate in the county, eighty-three percent of the population. So it's really good news, kudos to Capitola residents for getting out there and helping protect everybody. So this is on the agenda, because everyone knows that coming up next week, everything is changing, and we're moving beyond the blueprint. And so I'm here to tell you what I know about moving beyond the blueprint, and a little bit of what I don't know, is that we do know that at this point, the governor of the state of California has announced that there's going to be no more tiers moving forward and no more business restrictions. So the occupancy requirements, the social distancing requirements, the mask requirements will be going away next week for businesses. There are restrictions that they placed, or guidance restrictions for mega events, which they define as five thousand people plus indoors or ten thousand people plus They do suggest for indoor large events that there would be verification of a negative test or a vaccine, and for the outdoor mega event, that those sorts of things would be recommended. But as I mentioned earlier, the capacity limitations, the physical distancing requirements would go away, and then the masking requirements would fall back on the City of California Department of Public Health's guidance for face covering. And what that guidance says is that fully vaccinated mass, people are generally not required to wear a mask. The exception is in public transportation, and then indoor school use settings where it is required. Unvaccinated people are required to continue to wear masks when indoors, but the process is to self-test. So if somebody says they're vaccinated, moving forward, they don't have to wear a mask in businesses and places like that. Now, there is an interesting nuance here, is that there's the California Department of Public Health guidance that's out there, and then there's also Cal-OSHA rules. Cal-OSHA rules cover employers in the state of California, and they're rules, the rules that you have to comply with as an employer. And right now, they're saying that independent of vaccination, employees are still supposed to wear masks next week. So technically, under the rules next week, if you were to go to Nob Hill, all the employees should be wearing masks and all the public not. I do understand that Cal-OSHA put out some temporary rules, some interim guidance, I think, last week. It didn't make a ton of sense. Last night, I think they revoked it, and said that they're going to be considering revisions again next week to try to bring everything in line. So that's the situation right now, is that if you are an employer, your employees are supposed to continue to remain masked, independent of vaccination status. If you're not an employer, if you're vaccinated, you can go out in the public without a mask. For Capitola, on June twenty-fourth, coming up in two weeks, staff, now that we have a little bit more clear guidance about what the summer is going to look like, we're going to be bringing a plan for council review and direction about our summer festivals and events, and then we are tentatively planning to transition for our city council PC meetings in August to in-person, which is consistent with conversations that I've been having with other city managers in the region about their plans as well. So with that, I'm available for questions.
Okay, any questions from council? Seeing no questions, we can move this to the audience for questions. Let me pull up my slip. So we'll go ahead and take public comments. If you'd like to make a comment, you can raise, or if you'd like to make a comment, send an email now to publiccomment@ci.capitola.ca.us. Or to speak, please raise your hand now by clicking on reactions and clicking raise hands in your Zoom application, or by dialing star nine on your landline phone. A moderator will unmute you. You have up to three minutes to speak. Any questions from our participants?
Mayor Brooks, I do not see any attendees of this meeting with their hands raised on this item, and I do not see any public comment emails.
Okay, so the recommendation is to make the determination that all hazards related to the worldwide spread of coronavirus are detailed in the resolution, number four-one-six-eight, adopted by city council on March twelfth, still exists, and there is a need to continue action. So we'll bring this back to council for further comment and a vote. Do I have a motion?
You still move.
I have a first from Councilmember Bertrand. We have a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson, a first and a second. And I have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Bertrand.
I agree.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story. Mayor Brooks.
Aye.
All right, this item passes unanimously. We'll now move on to item nine B. This is the Housing for a Healthy Santa Cruz Three-Year Plan Season Two Ten. And so my turn, is this, Randy, is this your item?
Well, first, can I confirm I'm coming through with my headset?
We can hear you.
Okay, well, I will etiquette question. Jamie, do you cue me up, or should I take over?
It's all yours, Randy.
Okay, well, that'll do the formal, "Good evening, Mayor Brooks and council members." I'm Randy Morris. I'm the director of the Santa Cruz County Human Services Department, and as of last fall, our county administrator shifted the administrative oversight of the Homeless Services Office, as it used to be called, to my department, Human Services, and it's called Housing for Health. Dr. Robert Ratner was hired and started in the fall, and he is going to give the presentation. I'm going to just say a few introductory remarks and then turn it over to him. I do want to remind your council of the many things you have to do if you don't track this. We were in front of you last fall to report to you that we had a draft three-year framework that was the end result of a lot of community work, and that it was put in front of you to let you know that draft was then going to be vetted, further reviewed. We were very closely with your city manager, Jamie, and the community. And why we're back now is the end result of what happened since we came to you, our board, the other three city councils, is we completed that process, and we're in front of you for what I hope is a very simple vote, because we are not asking you to make a vote on any vegetarian issues, any policy issues, but just to accept that this is the framework we are going to use together as city, county, and community to organize this work that is very complex, very underfunded, but at least it gives us a framework. So to repeat, you are not being asked to make any decisions that position you to have to commit to anything other than to use this framework together with us in our work going forward. I do want to say, one of the themes that we're trying to bring up in our presentations is this issue is very large. It is a byproduct of arguably decades of policies that predominantly are federal and state, but some local. And so we are not here in front of you with any illusion that this framework is going to solve this very complex issue, and it's an issue that is bigger than the city and the county. What we are in front of you is that which is in our control, which is how we organize our work, prioritize our work, make decisions, we can move the needle a little better, but really, we need to position ourselves for what we believe is a future of more federal and state funding to us. And the better organized we are, the better our framework is, the more we're moving in a positive collaborative direction versus, you know, tension and finger-pointing and disagreements, which often plague these discussions in communities because the issue's so big. It disadvantages us from funding. And I'll just end before turning over to Robert. He is going to walk through the details. We are seeing some positive signals with the turnover of the president. We got a lot of promise- We got a lot of promising signals about new federal funding. And in the governor's budget, which is about to be adopted, we have a large body of money that is going to be coming and it's not landed yet. It's not been put out where it will land. But I think this framework that's in front of you, though it doesn't ask you to take any particular action by adopting this, when we apply for grant funding and pilot funding, we can honestly say this community, Santa Cruz County, which includes four cities, we together have a framework that we're working under and we're worth you piloting some money with us to try to move some of these ideas forward. And you will see in Robert's proposal, we have a very large funding gap. But again, to end on the positive, this at least organizes us and it helps us figure out how to make decisions better and where to purpose new money when we believe it comes in. So with that said, I hope that makes clear what we're asking for at the end of the presentation is I don't know what the words are. Maybe can Jamie remind me, I think, you know, just to accept and file and approve that this is the framework we're working with together. And I'm going to end with giving a shout out to our colleague Jamie, who is not only a great historian who's been working out this for years before my tenure, but a really great thought partner. So really appreciate your city manager who we work with closely on this work. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Ratner.
Thank you, Randy, and I most certainly can help facilitate that in my capacity this evening to help move this forward. If with a vote, I'll be asking council for that. So Mr. Ratner.
Thank you, Randy. Thank you, Mayor Brooks and council members. I have a slide presentation. I'm noticing I don't have my share screen on on the Zoom. Is that something that you all could make available or maybe share the slide deck so I can go through the materials for everybody?
Yes, let me take a look. You should be able to share your screen.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, unfortunately, it does say you're allowed to share the screen, so I don't know.
Okay, well, we will ad lib. I will talk through the material and if we can get it up and running, we'll go through the slide deck then. Randy alluded to this, but we're here to present the three-year strategic framework that the Board of Supervisors in the county of Santa Cruz approved. And it's a framework for us to work together with city, community partners, and interested folks throughout the county to prevent and end homelessness. And the period of time that we're working on with this framework is from January of twenty twenty-one through January of twenty twenty-four. Randy and I both work for the County Human Services Department. And our new division that Randy alluded to is called the Housing for Health Division. And we are staffing something called the Homeless Action Partnership, which your city manager has been involved with. Ah ha!
I am sharing the screen, so let me know if you can see it or not. I just want to make sure.
I can definitely see it. Looks like it's the full framework, so a little bit different from the slide deck, but I'll highlight some things in actual framework as well. The staff that we have in our new division, I was referencing something called the Homeless Action Partnership, and your city manager has been very involved with the Homeless Action Partnership for quite some time. And it's a required community entity that brings together stakeholders. It's required by HUD, the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development, and it enables us to bring in dollars related to preventing and ending homelessness through something called the CTEAM of Care process. And one of our tasks with our new framework was to reinvigorate that Homeless Action Partnership and look at who we're bringing to the table and improving our outcomes together. Randy alluded to the fact that the framework that you all can see on your screen is actually a final version. And Randy and a colleague of ours, Lisa Benson, had presented an earlier draft of this framework to the council and members of your community. And we went out and got feedback based on that draft. And one of the highlights, some of the things that we changed that you'll see in this final version. And we're also going to give an overview of some key things in the framework, share a little bit about how the stories we use to describe and understand the problem of homelessness impact our ability to really address the issue. We'll give an overview of the gaps that we see. The framework calls for us to have certain targets in terms of shelter beds and other kinds of housing interventions. So I'll share a little bit about where we are as a community and getting to the goals in the framework. And then share a little bit about six-month plan that we had for the January through June period. The framework calls for us in the county to develop collaborative six-month action plans to address, ah ha, slide deck. And I'm on the second one, the presentation overview. So that's kind of the outline. And then the next slide is really about the feedback that we received. Number one, the original document that we put out there was really complex, dense with words, not a lot of pictures, hard for people to understand. So we really tried to make it easier and clearer in terms of what we're trying to do with the framework. Folks in the community really wanted us to emphasize the importance of the gaps between the income of people who are living in our community and the cost of housing as one of the major contributors to homelessness. So we tried to elevate the importance of that message. There was also a strong amount of feedback about moving what some healthcare people call upstream or others talked about as preventing homelessness. It's a lot easier and frankly cheaper from a public health and public investment perspective to prevent people from losing their homes as opposed to trying to support them to get back into housing. So there was a push for us to emphasize prevention. The community asked for us to talk about how health issues, particularly behavioral health issues, and that term often is used for the mental health and substance use related challenges and how those contribute to homelessness. So we incorporated some more information on that. We also wanted to include information about encampments, people who are living together, often in large groups unhoused, and how we can work together with our city partners and community members to address those issues. And then finally, feedback we received included a message to involve people who've experienced homelessness or currently experiencing homelessness and how we approach the issue and design our programs and services. So the next slide is a high level. What are we trying to accomplish with the framework? Our overall goal in that three-year period is to decrease unsheltered homelessness in half and then to reduce overall homelessness by a quarter. To briefly explain the difference in those terms, unsheltered homelessness means people who are without any kind of roof over their head or shelter. So when we talk about homelessness in our Housing for Health framework, we distinguish between those with no shelter who are living in tents or in vehicles versus people who are in shelter or temporary housing programs. So the framework calls for us to really focus on the issue of unsheltered homelessness, getting more people into shelter and on pathways to permanent housing, and overall looking at reducing the number of households experiencing homelessness by a quarter. So on the slide, you can see the numerical goals that we're trying to achieve. And we're going to be working on creating public dashboards where folks can see how we're doing relative to those goals over time. The next slide is about principles that the community wanted us to follow in addressing homelessness. And the guiding principles are that the plans that we come up with should be specific and actionable. We should really remember that when we talk about homelessness, we're talking about human beings with stories and lives and opportunities to give back to the community and society as a whole and really remembering the humanity of the issues that we're talking about. Thinking about equity and inclusion, when one looks at the data about who's more likely to experience homelessness, there are certain groups that racial groups, ethnic groups, people with certain kinds of health conditions that are much more likely to experience homelessness. So we need to reflect on how we collectively are excluding certain groups from access to opportunities in housing and really try to address those issues. Another point is thinking a systematic approach, so not looking at just one piece of the puzzle, but thinking about how of all of us work together and how if you just invest in outreach to people who are homeless, but there's nowhere to outreach and connect them to, you're not really thinking about how all the pieces in the system fit together. Another key element is focusing on the data and what it's telling us, what's working. Let's do more of that. And when something's not working or an investment is not getting us the kinds of returns we want in terms of getting people back into housing, we need to be able to adjust. And then really thinking about a county-wide scope, how there are significant geographic differences throughout the county, but trying to create some consistency in how we approach the issue while at the same time addressing the diversity of the needs in each of the communities and the different populations that experience homelessness. The right side of the slide illustrates the targets we're trying to achieve to get to those overall reduction goals around homelessness. So on the bottom right side of the slide, it shows you the number of temporary housing beds. So often people refer to that as shelter or transitional housing. So presently, and this was before COVID nineteen and our expansion of shelter capacity significantly. Before that, the community had four hundred and forty temporary housing beds. So our goal is to get up to six hundred before the end of the plan. And the sooner we can get there, the sooner we can get to the results that we'd like to have. Rapid rehousing is a program model that involves some time-limited subsidies to help people who are homeless get back into housing, support them to increase their income over time, but helping them pay their rent until they're able to afford it. And this framework calls for us to significantly increase those slots. And then permanent supportive housing is housing where there's an ongoing subsidy that helps close the gap between the cost of the housing unit and the income of a household, and there's ongoing services. And permanent supportive housing is typically for people struggling with health issues, whether it's a mental health condition or a senior who needs that kind of ongoing support to be able to keep their home. And the plan calls for us to increase our permanent supportive housing by a hundred slots. And then above that are some markers that we're trying to aim for with these different kinds of interventions. And I'll just globally say the goals are to reduce the amount of time people are in programs while also increasing our success. So under emergency shelter, our goal is to reduce the amount of time that someone is in emergency shelter and increase the number of people that exit from a shelter program into permanent housing. So these are really ambitious goals and we're committed to working toward them with our team and with our community partners and tracking how we're doing and looking for the places where we're getting success and traction and trying to replicate that in other programs. If we go on to the next slide, the framework calls for us to focus on some core areas of action. So the key things we're working on is building a coalition. A problem as complicated and with so many different historical factors and issues that contribute to why so many people are unhoused requires us to really build a group of people who are committed to addressing this issue. So one of our tasks as staff in the Housing for Health Division is to not take on the full responsibility but to figure out how do we work effectively in the community with our partners and bring together folks with different ideas and ways to contribute. Number two is really focusing on preventing homelessness. And I think it's worth elevating the importance of this topic right now because as the pandemic is winding down, so many people have been hit hard economically and are challenged to be able to afford their rent. The eviction moratorium in California will be coming to an end June thirtieth. So I think we need to work together to help as many families and community members to stay in their homes as possible. So we don't see an uptick in the number of people without homes. Increasing connections, so healthcare connections, familial, social connections. These are all really important ways for people to get back into housing and get the supports they need. And then expanding permanent housing is another key objective. And then the community asks us to really think about the root causes of homelessness and the housing affordability gap, the gap between people's incomes and the cost of housing in the community. Over and over again, in our feedback, that was elevated as something we really need to pay attention to. That's why it's bolded here on the slide. Really thinking about how our healthcare services can be oriented more to supporting people to stay in community and out of institutions and keeping their homes. I appreciated that we were presenting with colleagues of mine in adult and long-term care. Adult Protective Services has a program called Home Safe, where they're bringing supports to seniors who are at risk of losing their housing, and they help to address health issues, economic issues. So it's a great example of prevention and this idea of helping address health issues as part of our framework. Lack of supportive connections. There's a lot of evidence locally and nationally that as people are struggling to keep housing, they often lean on friends and family. And if those connections get lost or broken, that can lead to someone becoming unsheltered. So helping people to make those connections again with people in the community, family, friends, but also supportive providers, healthcare providers, human services providers. And then the last thing that we called out in the framework is that at the individual and the collective level, that the problem of homelessness can be so overwhelming when you're thinking about it in terms of society as a whole. We don't seem to be making progress in workers, policymakers. We can lose hope in a sense of direction and purpose. And if we, we can't hold on to that, imagine what it's like for people who are unhoused. So one of our, our goals under the framework is really trying to hold on to hope in a sense that we can, we can get to a place where we can house and make sure everyone has a home in our community. I remember a time when homelessness was a relatively new phenomenon when I was a college student and folks felt like back then, oh, we can tackle this problem. And now this is twenty-five years later, and now a lot of that hope that we could tackle the problem has gone. So our framework calls for us to reinvigorate ourselves, to believe it's possible. And Randy alluded to, I think we need to work at the federal and state level to advocate for the kinds of resources and policy changes to really get to the root causes of the problem. I want to go into the next slide. Wanted to just highlight a few things related to that affordable housing gap. This slide comes from a report put together by the California Housing Partnership Coalition. And they've done analyses around the state with different communities. And they look at how many low-income households are struggling to pay rent. And in most communities, the households that have extremely low incomes are the most at risk of becoming homeless. They're much more likely to pay fifty percent, which is considered a severe housing cost burden for rent and utilities, et cetera. And that's the group where we really need to figure out how do we help them increase their incomes or how to, and how do we help create more housing that's affordable for them? So in Santa Cruz County, if we had a magic wand and we could create a perfect amount of new affordable housing, we would need ten thousand more affordable housing units for extremely low and very low-income households. The graph on the right shows that seventy-five percent of extremely low-income households are severely cospured and are the most at risk of becoming homeless. And among that group, but just to highlight who's, who's more commonly in that group of extremely low-income households. It's often seniors, people with disabilities living on fixed incomes, students, folks working minimum wage jobs. So there's a significant portion of people who are, are living in our community and really struggling to keep their housing. And then those who have had events in their lives, they kind of tip them over and they're not able to keep their home. So we really need to focus on that group if we're going to be successful in preventing and helping people get back into housing. Go into the, the next slide. Since we started our new division, we've been really paying attention to community narratives or stories. And the stories that we share impact the way we see challenging issues like homelessness. And just wanted to share a few of the stories I've heard since I've started working here. And they're not unique to Santa Cruz County per se, but they are stories that create a dynamic where we're, we're not always going to be able to get to the, the long-term solutions that I think most people are hoping for. One, one other storyline that we've heard is we've got to get people into shelter now, the problem of encampments and so many unhoused people. We'll, we'll get to the developing the longer-term housing solutions later. And having been working on this issue for twenty-plus years, I, I've been in a lot of conversations where the focus is on shelter and, and getting to the housing later. And I, I think we have to do both. We have to work simultaneously on creating more of that affordable housing, helping people increase their incomes and get the right shelter capacity. But if we just create shelter, we're going to have large numbers of people who are sheltered but still homeless. So we've got, we've got to do both. It's not an either or. I've heard stories about people coming into particular communities because of the services. And, and our data here and around the state shows that most people who experience homelessness are from the community where they first come to ask for help. So in Santa Cruz, about three-quarters of people in various, what we call point-in-time counts of folks experiencing homelessness, lost their housing in Santa Cruz County. And if you look at statewide data, and there's, there's now some statewide data on homelessness. There's something called the Homelessness Data Information System. And if you look at that data, you see that anywhere between three to five percent of people experiencing homelessness reach out to another county or community from where they were before to access services. So that there really isn't as much of that movement that I think people believe is there. Most people experiencing homelessness stay in the communities where they lost their housing. And then the last story that I want to highlight is that a lot of people think what, what they see with large encampments is representative of what's happening with the broader community of people who are who are unhoused and struggling with homelessness. And folks living in encampments are typically a really small fraction of the population of people experiencing homelessness. In the county of Santa Cruz, it's about, it varies, looking at the data, between 20% and 25% of people experiencing homelessness live in outdoor areas. But the vast majority of people are not drawing the attention of the public. And we run the risk of if we just focus on encampments, we're going to forget 75, 80% of the people experiencing homelessness if we don't really think more broadly about the issue. If you go into the next slide. I know Councilmember Peter, this is very data-rich. I'm just going to highlight a few things on here and you all can take a look at it more closely. But it's related to the Regional Housing Needs Allocation Goals. And earlier I mentioned the Magic Wand Gold Standard. If we could magically create 10,000 more affordable housing units, we'd fill that affordable housing gap from the California Housing Partnership Coalition's perspective. And this shows the RENA goals, the sort of local goals that were established for an eight-year plan. And Councilmember Peters mentioned that there's work being done on the next eight-year plan. But while that's happening, I think we should also look at what were our goals for this eight-year period? It's a coincidence that the RENA goal time period is actually the same time period for our Housing for Healthy Santa Cruz framework. And on the yellow side, the most important kind of housing for us to develop, if you look at this, very low-income households. So for a family of four living between $40,000 and $66,000 a year, that's the kind of housing we really need to invest in if we're going to really prevent homelessness and help people who are experiencing homelessness get back into housing. It's the housing that collectively across all of our jurisdictions in the county, we're doing the worst job of creating. So that's an area for us to really focus on together over the next time period. Go on to the next slide. This shows, and Randy alluded to this, our plan calls for a certain number of slots of different kinds of interventions. And we did some very high-level mathematical projections on how much it would cost for us to fully implement this overall framework. And it's around $65 million on the right is the estimated cost, and that's an annual basis. The orange bar shows how much money we have available, so a little less than half of that. And then of the money we currently have available collectively between the city and the county and other partners, most, well, not most, a lot of that money is one-time money. You can see a little over $10 million of the $30 million is one-time money. And most of our funding comes from the federal government and state agencies. So back to Randy's earlier point, at the local level, we really need to see those investments sustained over the long haul for us to really deliver on these goals. We can still make progress without those resources, but getting to that blue bar will significantly increases our probability of being successful with the overall framework goals. So we're going to do our best to take advantage of the governor's bold budget proposal of $12 billion of additional resources. And I hope that that leads to an ongoing commitment from states, government, and the federal government to close these gaps. And we'll see the results in the community if we can do that. And then getting to the end, our six-month plan for this January through June period, these are big things we're working on, working on being more transparent about where the money's going, what we're working on. Some of you may have heard about our efforts to help people who are in our COVID-19 shelters that we will be closing in the fall and winter of this year to get them back into housing before we have to close down our COVID-related sites. Part of that effort includes a partnership with the Housing Authority. I'm very excited that we have such a wonderful partnership with them. Working on getting our shelters and transitional housing programs to have better outcomes and resourcing them appropriately. Working on building a coalition. And we're working on changing our structure of the Homeless Action Partnership to be more effective in our collaboration. Working on how we're going to address encampments. Project Home Key is a state program that the governor announced will be in the extension of it. And there's a significant investment, around $7 billion in the governor's proposal. To help communities like ours acquire new properties and make them available for housing. So that can help us with our RENA goals. There's Getting to Zero work groups. So these are special work groups that we're creating to focus on homelessness among populations like veterans, families with children. Because if you look at our data, we're actually fairly close to getting to a system where we can get people in those groups housed fairly quickly. So we have some work that was focused in on that. And then working on getting some data dashboards to see how we're doing over time and making changes based on that information. And that's the end of our presentation. Apologize if that went a little longer than you had on your agenda. And Randy and I are here for any questions.
So much. Okay, council members, do you have any questions? Okay, do we have any questions from our attendees? Oh, go ahead.
Mayor Brooks, I don't see what their hands raised, but...
Okay, so again, a reminder, if you'd like to email, you can do that now by publiccomment@ci.capitola.ca.us. Or you can raise your hand now by clicking on reactions and clicking Raise Hand in your Zoom application. See no questions from our attendees and no emails? We'll bring this back to council for further comment. And then we do need a motion to adopt the final version of the Housing for a Healthy Santa Cruz. Councilmember Bertrand.
Yes, Dr. Ratner, I was just wondering. So you mentioned some people that actually use their vehicles and some people have RVs and stuff like that. How do you look at that particular population? Our experience is they seem to have more resources and they have to keep all that together to some extent. So I was wondering if you could comment on that?
Yeah, I think people who still have access to vehicles tend to still have access to a little bit more resources to pay the things that we need to pay for to hold on to our vehicles. Getting your driver's license, your insurance, your registering of your vehicles. And one of the innovative programs that got started recently was a safe parking program to create a place where people can park and not be asked to move around and get connected with services and resources. I think it's a good question. There's a wide diversity of people experiencing homelessness. And folks who still have vehicles tend to, but not always, have a little bit more resources than those that are sleeping in tents or just without any kind of protection at all.
So a follow-up question is, if I could coin a term, you know, not an expert, but to say the mindset of being homeless and having, let's say, experienced homelessness for a particular period of time such that your adjustment to society, your viewpoint on being a part of society is altered. Could you comment on that?
Yeah, my experience is not personal. I have never, I've been a couch surfer in my life, but fortunately I've had enough connections where I haven't had to sleep outdoors and experience that.
Well, I wasn't talking about you personally.
No, 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 I understand absolutely. I was just, what I wanted to share is that in my conversations and in my work life, hearing the stories of folks is that the longer you go without connections with others and the longer you're living on the streets, it gets much more challenging to believe that there's help out there and that you can trust the systems and people in the community to support you. So that's why I think some of the feedback we got in the framework is really focused on prevention and trying to help get people connected to services as early as possible. We do have specific programs for folks who have been homeless for long periods of time. And one thing that I think it's important for community members to know is that the longer you have that experience, in many cases, the longer it takes for people to get reconnected. So outreach workers may take four to six months to build up a trusting relationship with someone who's been without a home for a long period of time. So I think for all of us, remembering that that experience can require patience to rebuild those connections.
One more question if I may. So there's a lot of organizations that supply services like food and other things, dental and such like that. So to some extent, they're helping people avoiding homelessness in some ways because those expenses are helped for by 501(c)(c) series or so. Does your plan interact with them to support their mission so that you don't have more people that may become homeless?
Yeah, that umbrella, I appreciate the question. That umbrella of preventing homelessness is actually, I think is really broad. And I think it's more than just straight economic assistance to help people pay rent. It's really how do we support people over the long term to meet their needs? And I was just on a call earlier with some folks who do community outreach. And they were saying people are having to make decisions between food or dental care and paying their rent. So to the extent that those other services are available at low or no cost, it makes it easier for people to decide they can get those needs met and still be able to pay their rent. So all of these things are definitely interrelated. And I see that the support for the programs that serve those extremely low-income households are really critical for that prevention effort. As well as helping people to get back into homes, too.
Right.
Okay, so we've brought this back to council. Dr. Ratner, Randy, thank you so much. Council, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion to receive the presentation and adopt the final version of the Housing for a Healthy Santa Cruz, a strategic framework for addressing homelessness in Santa Cruz County.
You expressed it perfectly.
All right, I have a first from Councilmember Bertrand.
Second.
A second from Councilmember Kaiser. Now the roll call, please.
Councilmember Bertrand.
I approve.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story.
Aye.
Mayor Brooks.
Aye. Thanks again, gentlemen, for all of your work. This is very exciting and I hope to be part of the energy. You mentioned, Dr. Ratner, of bringing light and hope back to this very important cause. Thanks again, gentlemen.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Have a great evening. Bye.
All right, council members, we're going to be moving on to item 90. This is the Rispin Property Park Project Naming. Who will I be turning with?
Mayor Brooks. I will be giving this presentation. I will share my screen. I will attempt to, as we always do. Okay, and we will share.
Councilmember Bertrand's hand is still raised. Just want to let you know, council member.
All right, so I will share my screen now. Hopefully we see it. You see my screen okay? I hope. Okay. So this item is about, thank you for having me, the Rispin Property Park Naming item. Little background, the Rispin Mansion is known for Henry Allen Rispin. Rispin purchased most of Capitola and began construction on the mansion in about 1919. His Capitola holdings were foreclosed upon in 1930 and he left. The city purchased the mansion property in 1985. During those intermittent years, it was vacant, it had been used by the poor Claire's nuns, but in 1985, the city purchased it. While the city was working on this pending park project, a Capitola resident raised the question regarding the name Rispin. She had mentioned that racial covenants existed on her property deed. February 11th, council meeting, council directed staff to do some research on Henry Allen Rispin. And the museum curator, Frank Perry, did research and looked at the existence of racial covenants, especially during the time of Rispin's ownership of most of Capitola. Mr. Perry did confirm that some deeds included racial covenants. You came across enough in different neighborhoods. In addition, at one point, there was an auction toward the end of Henry Allen Rispin's dealings with Capitola in 1925, and there was language-limiting property purchase at that time to whites only. Mr. Perry, however, did not find any documents that included Mr. Rispin's direct opinion on race. That being said, there weren't a lot of documents directly attributed to Mr. Rispin. So Mr. Perry, museum curator, included that there are three possibilities. Rispin did put the language in the deeds. A lending or lending institution required that language and Rispin agreed with it. Or a lending institution required that language and he disagreed with it, but he actually did ultimately sign on to it. Mr. Perry does not believe it's very likely that he wasn't aware. He's pretty sure he was aware of it, being a businessman. The deeds at that time were not at the same level as the documents we go through. So he would have, he most likely had seen all of that information. Little other history is unfortunately racial covenants were very common in the first half of the 20th century in the United States, California, and Santa Cruz County. This practice was not ruled unconstitutional until 1948. In addition, it was heavily supported by both real estate lending industries as well as federal, state, and local government agencies. As far as naming, the city council does not officially need to name the park. In this city alone, just for example, some parks are unofficially known by their location. Jade Street Park, Monterey Park, SoCal Creek Park. And then there's some others that are known kind of, you know, to parents and others. It's like Hidden Park and things like that, but there are no necessarily official names on things. Rispin Mansion, however, was, is listed as a district, which is the entire property on the National Historic Register of Historic Places. And in addition, it is tied, the history tying of it is actually tied to Henry Allen Rispin because of his development of Capitola. The Rispin Mansion is known as the Rispin Mansion throughout the community. People that have grown up here know it as the Rispin Mansion. The city, however, has not selected an official name for the surrounding park. And I do not believe that it's as well identified as the mansion itself. Staff, in looking into this, we've kind of identified a few options for the council to consider. Again, the city council doesn't need to officially name the park. You know, as this becomes a park, because probably part of the reason it's not necessarily known in the community as Rispin Park is similar to the mansion, is it hasn't really been a public park per se. It's been kind of surrounding it. So as it becomes a park, you know, it may get known as something, but again, the city council does not need to officially name it. The park could be named after Henry Allen Rispin if the council desires. The other option is to give the park a different name. Claire's Park, you know, as a location and as well as the name of the order of the nuns that lived there for 20-plus years, maybe an option. Wharf Road, the other options, you know, things like Mansion Park. It was brought to my attention that New Brighton Middle School was named by the students at the time in 1983. So that is also something the council could consider, you know, some sort of naming contest. So at this time, I am available for any questions. That kind of concludes my presentation.
Okay, Vice Mayor Story.
Larry, you mentioned that in the National Registry, it's listed as Rispin Mansion. Would there be any adverse consequences from that historical registry perspective if we were to name it something else? And does that registry, you know, prohibit us from naming it something else?
The information that I found, it does not. Unless there is, you know, the ties to it, if there are specific grants and things like that associated with it. But they do state the federal government does not limit the change of the name or anything like that with it. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? No questions? Okay. Now, this is an opportunity for public comment on this item. So if you'd like to make a comment, you can send an email now to publiccomment@ci.capitola.ca.us. Or to speak, please raise your hand now by clicking on Reactions, then clicking Raise Hand in your Zoom application, or by dialing *9 on your landline phone. Our moderator will unmute you and you will have up to three minutes to speak. Do we have anyone of our attendees?
Mayor Brooks, I do not see any attendees with their hands raised on this item. And I do not see any emails. and I do not see any emails.
We'll just give it a moment.
I still, I do not see anybody with their hands raised at this time.
All right. So we'll bring this back to council for further discussion and a vote. Okay, Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor Brooks. Thank you to Frank and Larry and staff that took the time to do the research that we requested about this previously. I really appreciate it. I think it's important that we have this information, that the community has this information. So I'm really grateful that you were able to come back to us with all of this this evening. You know, based on the staff report and what we just heard, it seems pretty clear to me that we are not in any rush to name this, where there's no urgency around it. We're not required to name it at all, ever. But at this point, I don't see the necessity in determining if we will name it or what we would name it at tonight's meeting. So I, you know, I'm prepared to make a motion to just leave it as is for now and reconsider this issue down the road once the park is actually built and finished. But I would like to hear other council members' comments as well.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Thanks. Yeah, I'm also in line with that. I did sort of, for not wanting to just sort of like throw this out the window after, you know, work was done towards finding out all the information. And thank you, Larry. And I think, too, I do like the idea of maybe something being brought up at New Brighton Middle School, having some type of historical learning session or something. I feel like maybe that is the demographic of people that might be using the park the most. I could be wrong. So I'm kind of like between both sides of the coin, where if we kind of let it lie and see, once it's built, too, that might even give us a better idea of what it resonates as, as far as a name goes. And then, yeah, getting community input or youth input, I think, would be beneficial as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Bertrand.
The media job.
Okay. We don't even know what the park's going to be. You know, it hasn't been built out. We have no clue how people are going to respond to it. I mean, it seems great. We're going to have a bocce ball court. We're going to have a nice, you know, reflection pond. We're going to have a place where concerts could perhaps be given or plays be given. You know, there's probably other expansions that are going to occur as we get a little bit more revenue from the city budget. So I have no problem waiting. I think the initial comment was perhaps whoever brought it up was thinking, well, wait a minute, you know, this whole lot horses here. We don't want to call this because I think there's an issue. And so, as you said, Kristin, you know, staff has brought a lot of detail about the history. I think that's going to help our decision when the time comes. I'm sort of partial to when the time comes. It would be a public choice, you know, something with a committee of citizens or maybe some sort of, I don't know about a contest. I just don't know. But some way for the public to weigh in, you know, after the park's been in use for a while and people get to be comfortable with it. And they want to call it something that reflects how they use it.
Any other comments? Vice Mayor Story.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Brooks. I just wanted to say I agree with the previous comments. And I believe that Councilwoman Peterson had made a motion, and so I'm willing to second that motion. I think that, you know, we should put it off. There's really no reason for us to officially, you know, name the park, anything. And at some point in the future, when the library is up and running and we want to, and the park is completed, and we want to draw the public's attention to these accomplishments, you know, maybe then we can engage in a naming competition or a poll or some effort to get the community involved in, I think, naming what is going to be a tremendous asset and I think a treasure in that location for Capitola. And I don't, you know, and I don't also necessarily regard us of, you know, Mr. Rispin's, you know, personal opinions on race. I don't know that we necessarily need to name it after the very first person who, you know, maybe built it 100 years ago. The city has owned this park and the mansion. We're going on almost, what, 50 years now? So I think we're free to maybe name it as we may choose at a different point in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Story. So we have a first and a second. The comment I would just add, I agree with all the council members today. The one thing I just want to address is what the concern was about Mr. Rispin. And today's information does not show or prove in one way or another and who Mr. Rispin was or what he believed in. And it's not up to me to make that call or be able to, just off of that information, assume anything about that individual. But what I do know is that there are just, there's most certainly some incredible people in our community today who I think we could name that park after. And so in the future, when we have this groundbreaking event, I hope that we'll be able to honor somebody amazing in our community. And, you know, the story Peterson, Bertrand, Brooks, Kaiser Park sounds perfect to me. But all jokes aside, we have a first and a second. May I have a roll call to table this item as of now? Oh, what I would like to say is that, you know, I'm a champion for kids, and I would love to have the students involved in whatever capacity as possible to get their input would just be delightful. So that is what I would add. Okay, so we have a first and a second to not name the park today. I wait till we have the park built to bring this back to council.
Yes, Councilmember Bertrand.
I agree.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story.
Aye.
Mayor Brooks.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
All right, so now we're going to move on to item 9D to make appointments to the Santa Cruz County Youth Action Network and the Capitola Historical Museum Board.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Brooks and council. I'll be just doing a very quick presentation on this. If you give me one second, I will pull up some slides that have a little more information for you. Share my screen. Okay, and I'm going to double-check. You're seeing the slideshow and not a corner of my screen and not my notes, but the actual slideshow. Thank you, Councilmember Kaiser. I saw your thumbs up. I appreciate it. So we have two additional appointments for council to make this evening. As you know, you made several in late December and then early January of 2021. Tonight, we have, we're asking for council to make appointments to the Historical Museum Board. And then the Youth Action Network is looking for a representative from Capitola City Council. So you'll be appointing one of your own to serve on that committee. So for the Historical Museum Board, that board deals with the historical museum that I'm pointing at because it's out the door that direction. And there are three members of theirs that are expiring tonight, actually. Its three incumbent members are the Vice President, the Secretary, and the Treasurer. All three indicated they would love to serve again. We did open recruitment. There was one applicant. The museum board itself met last week and recommended the three incumbents to be reappointed for an additional term. They do need to be appointed by city council. Doesn't need to be done by individuals on council, just as a body, the five of you. If you concur, these three members will remain on the board. So there's, I think we could do this separately. So if we can do that first, and then I'll move on to your second appointment of the evening. So if you want to just indicate to me, we don't have to do a formal motion for this one, just let me know if council is all right with this recommendation.
Is that a hand raised, Councilmember Peterson? Are you in agreement? Thumbs up?
Both, both. I'm in agreement, and I just also want to take a quick moment to encourage the applicant, the additional applicant, to volunteer at the museum if he isn't already, because that's quite often a pathway towards board membership when there's an opening. That's what happened with me. So I would just like to encourage that person to volunteer at the museum if they're not already. And yes, I'm okay with that, with the incumbent member being reappointed.
Okay, Councilmember Kaiser, I think you're the one I didn't see. If it was a, and Vice Mayor Story, were you okay?
Okay.
All right, so.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Perfect, thank you all. And for the next appointment, this is exciting. This is a new appointment to make this evening for the kind of reformed, the Youth Action Network, which was previously called the Youth Violence Prevention Network. It's now kind of been reorganized. It's an initiative between youth and adult allies to promote youth voices and kind of youth leadership in our general region and in our areas. So bringing together the United Way and several other community partners, they were asking for a member of the City of Capitola City Council to serve as, what are they calling you? As champions, I don't remember the official name for what you'd be, but you would be on the Youth Action Network Steering Committee. And a little bit of information, because I know that this would be something you'd be spending time on. This is a body that would meet quarterly. At this point, it would still be virtual, and the first meeting wouldn't be until either October or November of this year. So you have a little time to get used to it, do some research. And they're thinking between 3:30 and 6:00 p.m., so after school, because of course, there'll be youth involved in the meetings. And Amanda Gamble from the United Way is facilitating this. She would be the contact that our representative would be in touch with. So if there's any questions, I did think I saw her on the call, but we're really just looking for council to nominate a representative this evening.
Do we have any council members interested? Okay, well, you know, Kristin, what were you going to say?
I was going to say, if no one else is interested, I'd be happy to volunteer, but I wanted to defer to you because I know that you work a lot with children and families and, you know, wanted to give you first right of refusal, so to speak. But if not, I'd be happy to volunteer.
Yeah, this is one that I'm, I would love to sit on if council would have it this evening.
Excellent.
All nominate, you bet.
Great.
Thank you, Councilmember Bertrand. Vice Mayor Story, I didn't see a thumb. Okay.
Thank you. So I have consensus there. I'll put that in the minutes, and I'll follow up with you, Mayor Brooks, with the details. So thank you very much. That's all I have for this item this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, council members. Okay, now we'll move on to, that didn't need a vote, Chloe. I think we're good. Okay, so item 9D, pavement management plan 2021. Mr. Justburg, this is your item.
Good evening, Mayor. Let me share my screen. Doing it from home, I hope it works. Haven't done it this way before. There we go. Hopefully, you can see it. Not if you can't. Good evening, Mayor and council. The item before you tonight is a report on the pavement management program for 2021. A little background, last year at this time, the council approved a list of streets for analysis to determine the most cost-effective research being treatment. At that time, we didn't have, we only had a little over $400,000, not going enough to move forward with the project. So as we analyzed the streets and decided how to move forward, we carried most, all the money forward to this year. Public work staff has worked with a local paving contractor with lots of experience to recommend treatments, actually walked all the streets and came up with what they recommended as the most cost-effective treatment. You know, in the past, even 10 years ago, when we looked at a street, it was either you put a slurry seal on it or you tore out all the asphalt and put in new asphalt. Today, as, you know, pricing, prices of oil, price of materials, price of labor have increased, the value has been determined that there's value in the asphalt that's on the ground, and we're best restoring it and protecting it rather than removing it and replacing it. So this is a look at the streets that were analyzed. They had two sections of 41st Avenue essentially extending from Highway 1 to Capitola Road. You can see the recommended treatments here and then the costs here. What they recommend here is that, first of all, is we need two and a half inches of new asphalt on those sections. On the section from Highway 1 to Claire's, we have to grind up the old asphalt, put it down as a base, and then put the two and a half inches over that. On the rest of it, we can probably get away with some digouts, dig out the bad sections, and then just put an overlay. So we don't have to go through the recycling effort. We're not going to be removing it, but we wouldn't be grinding it up either. You can see the paving costs and then the project costs are, including the digouts, some extra work, such as if we need to change handicap ramps and such. So those are the two different costs. The other streets we looked at, 42nd Avenue, before, we had always thought that this needed to be a dig and replace, but the contractor thinks that a rubber tape seal would work. And a rubber tape seal is really, you put down a layer of rock, and then you put one or two layers of a rubberized tape seal over that to smooth it out. It worked very well, especially in residential neighborhoods. I know the street in front of my house, which is in the county, received that this last year. So the contractor went through there and realized the rubber tape seal would work. Again, there's probably some digouts in other places where the asphalt is completely stale that we need to dig that out and replace it. But overall, the street can get a rubberized tape seal at a fraction of the cost. Bay Avenue, again, we looked at two sections from Highway 1 to Cap Haven and Cap Haven to Monterey. You can see the treatments recommended there. One's a slurry seal with digouts and a rubber tape seal. Again, probably digouts are included in there and the costs associated with that. Capitola Avenue, we looked at from Bay Avenue all the way down to Stockton. Now, a section of this was recently slurried as part of a county sanitation project. So we might be able to reduce that a bit, but they did recommend, because they didn't do a crack seal, that we do a crack seal and then do some slurry sealing. They did recommend that if we do that, that we replace the entire section of road in front of the fire station, just because of the loading with the heavy equipment there, that it's always a good idea to replace that section of road. Next street was Claire Street, where we, you know, it's been on the books for quite a while, from Wharf Road to 41st Avenue. Again, this would be a... Again, this would be a recycle and put down a two-inch overlay. And then Diamond and Ruby, which are in the same neighborhood as 42nd Avenue, both would get the same treatment of a rubber tape seal. Again, those were dig and replaces this time last year. So looking at the funding, let me see if I can back up one. Think I blew it. There we go. Sorry about that. The total project cost for all these treatments is $2.8 million. So just want to make sure we saw that number here, because it helps us when we look at the funding number. These are the funding sources we have. We have about $380,000 from SB One, which is the State Road Rehabilitation Program. That's two years of funding. We have two years of Measure D, which is $500,000. We have a Regional Transportation Improvement Program that was allocated by RTC based on population, which is another $500,000. So overall, we have just short of $1.4 million for two, $2.8 million worth of work. In coming up with a decision on, on where best to spend this money, I wanted to give you just a very short primer on pavement condition program, the pavement condition indexes are, and the treatments associated with them. So I know you've all heard this before, but the pavement condition index is a rating from zero to 100 that's given to the condition of the road, the, the status of the asphalt, if you will. If it's cracked, broken, if it's sinking, if it's got lots of hills and valleys in it, or it's pushing, it all affects the pavement condition index. A newly paved road on a solid base would have a pavement condition index of 100. A dirt road with no asphalt would have a pavement condition index of zero. So you go from zero to 100. So the good, very good, is 70 and above. And then you get from 50 to 70, you're in the fair, fair condition, poor is below 50, and then failed is below 25. So overall, the city has a pavement condition index back in 2017, which was the last time we did an overall rating summary of it, of 65. And you see it was kind of bounced up and down as we've had money to invest in pavement over the years. Typically, we're in a good cycle right now, so we're going to be investing, you know, a little over a million dollars. We'll probably bump the number up to, to the high 60s again, and if we are able to maintain it at that level, we'll stay there. One of our problems for is funding for pavement management has always been hit or miss, and right now with Measure D and SB One, we at least have it committed approximately $400,000 a year to spend on it. Just, I didn't include the budgeting summary, maybe I should have done that, but to maintain a pavement condition index of about 70 or higher would take an investment of approximately $770,000 a year. So you can see with the 400, we'll probably see it decline slowly, but we'll, probably won't have as big of hills and valleys as we had over the last 19 years. So as you're trying to allocate money to the program and figure out where it's best to spend it, this chart here shows you the repair cost versus the condition. So on the left-hand side, you have your failed streets on the bottom, and your very good streets up here, and then pavement life over here, and up in the boxes is the dollar. So on a very good, a very good street, we can get away with surface, slurry sealing, micro-surfacing, basically, the slurry seal programs we've seen in the past. Those cost on about $3 to $4 a square yard. They, they add a life to the asphalt of about 10 years. So if you do them every eight to 10 years on a newly paved street, it will just keep lasting, and you will never have to dig it up or recycle the asphalt and start over. Once you get in the 75% failed, so you're down here, you're talking overlays, overlays are in about $25 a square yard, it's quite an increase. And then once you get into failed roads, you're well over, you're at least $40, $50, $60 a square yard to dig it up, replace it, even doing the, the recycling, the cold-in-place recycling that we're recommending, it's still not that cheap. So as you can see, if we can keep our roads, get them all in good condition, and slurry seal them all the time, you're saving a lot of money. And so what we try to do when we allocate the money is come up with a program where we both, we know we have bad streets, we know we need to address them, but we don't want to just address the bad streets, because by the time we finish addressing all these bad streets, the good streets will be bad. So we have to find the mixture of slurry sealing where we can on a regular basis, and when we have the money available, we go fix the worst streets. So based on that, our recommended strategy is to complete one arterial pavement reconstruction project on that list, address the other logs on the list that we can can with rubber tape seals, and then allocate funds for neighborhoods slurry seal. So the streets we're recommending now, based on this, are 42nd Avenue, Bay Avenue, Claire Street, Diamond and Ruby Court. And I'll go over each one to explain why I'm recommending this, and certainly, there's no magic to this, if the council wants to change this, or add a street, or take a street out, that's certainly available. 42nd, Diamond and Ruby are streets that have been on the books for quite a while. It's always been upwards of a million dollars to replace them. Right now, based on the information we have, we can do it for about $300,000. Again, this isn't new pavement going in place, this is a, a seal and treatment of this road that's there, but it should provide probably 10 to 15 years' worth of life to that road. The other one is Claire Street. I think Claire's is probably one of the longest-standing projects on the city to try and get that rebuilt. It dates back to when we were trying to get a hotel into the wrist of a mansion. We had RDA money allocated at one point, but of course, the RDA went away. The hotel was gonna build, help build, rebuild the street, but the hotel went away. We do have money right now allocated to a pedestrian improvement project, but I think this would be an opportune time to combine that project with a recycle on asphalt and repave that project, street, and put in those pedestrian improvements, something we can move forward with pretty quickly here. That's why Claire Street is on there. And the Bay Avenue, we're recommending just one of the sections at this point, from Highway One to Cap Avenue. It desperately needs, you know, a treatment, it's one of the main, I think, main interests at least into the village. We have already taken care of Park Avenue, which is the other one. So that's the reason I put that one on there. The other section of Bay Avenue is another $100,000, but as you see, I'm trying to allocate some money to the slurry seal project and, and other items. So amazingly, this was not pre-contained, pre-planned, the total project cost is a million dollars even, based on the costs we have at this point, if we move with this, with these recommendations. With the remaining 100, $392,000, recommending we move forward with a slurry seal on the streets north of Capitola Road. I don't think we've ever, we've redone 46th Avenue and 42nd Avenue with paving projects, but we have not addressed the other streets in that area, Gray Street, 47th, 48th, and it'd be time to do that. They are going to need some digouts, there's some pretty bad sections, but I do think we can get away with a slurry seal on those streets and move forward with that. Public Works is also, I am requesting that we get to, that we issue a request for qualifications for the selection of a consulting engineer to assist us with the development of a five-year plan. I think it would be best, you know, we've come back year after year and say, well, which streets do we want to do this year? For us to develop a plan, say, this is what we're going to do with five years, and as long as the funding, and we, we can allocate the funding appropriately, we can say, in year three, we're going to do this street, and year four, we're going to do that street. And I think that's important. This consultant would also help us with pavement restoration planning. You know, we walked this with a contractor, and, and certainly they'd be available to help us. There's engineers who could help us with that, too. And also with the production of plans and specifications. Right now, we don't have the capabilities in-house to prepare the plans, we can't prepare the specs. We're not looking for a consultant to come over and take, and re-manage the program for us, we're looking for them to assist staff in getting the program done. We anticipate the first-year expenditure here would be about $75,000, because that would include development of the five-year plan, but that subsequent years would be probably in the $50,000 range, where we'd have productions of plans and specs, helping us with identifying the newest and greatest pavement restoration procedures that we could implement. So the recommendations tonight are to approve the road surfacing projects as recommended in the staff report, or amend them, and let me know what you want me to work on, approve a slurry seal project for the streets north of Capitola Road, and authorize issuance of a request for qualifications for consulting engineer as of outline. And with that, that was my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Vice Mayor's story.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Steve, thanks for that update and report. A couple of questions. One, I noticed in the report that, that it mentions that Fanmar could be applied with a rubberized tape seal for $90,000. And I was wondering why staff did not recommend that, as a, you know, and instead recommended the Capitola Road, the avenues, I'll call them, or, you know, tape, tape seal. And my other question is concerning, we got an email concerning Capitola Road going west between 38th and the city limit, and just, and there was a statement that that road was, you know, in horrendous condition. I'm just wondering if you could kind of quantify that, if, if you, if you were able to, in terms of the tiers and, and what condition that particular stretch of road is in. Thank you.
Absolutely. Vice Mayor's story. Fanmar was not on the list of streets I asked to analyze last year, this time last year. So we didn't include it, but we certainly have received quite a few emails regarding it, and that's why I did include it in the evaluation. And it's not recommended simply because it was one, not one of the streets that was really listed in the streets, although I know there's interest in it, there's always been interest in that street. So I included it. Certainly you could direct me to work on it at this point, and, and that's why it's a, that's the reason it wasn't recommended at this time. Regarding Capitola Road, I didn't have a chance to look at the pavement condition index report before I left the office tonight, since we got that email. If it's, let's say it's in similar condition to Claire's, could redo that street, and that's a, Claire's is a $600,000 project, it's probably another $400,000 to address Capitola Road. It's a little narrower, because he's mentioning just in one direction. If we did both directions, you're probably looking close to $800,000 for that stretch. Again, that's a, see this pass, guess to make, because I didn't get a chance to look pavement condition index or measure it, but it'd be somewhere in that range if it is the condition that's similar to Claire's.
Yeah, no, no, I understand. It was, we won't hold you for that. Thank you for that estimate.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Thanks. Thank you, Steve, for all the hard work and the presentation. I was just curious, on the last slide, talking about getting the, well, we had that leftovers 300,000, and then getting a, a, not architect, but... Thank you. Yeah, would that, the 75,000, would that be part of that leftover 300 that we had?
Yes, it would.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I think, just piggybacking on that, I think, as you started naming off streets, I was like, yeah, we should really have kind of an outward projection of, of what we want to deal with each year, so I think a five-year plan would be definitely the way to go. Thank you.
Any other questions? Some councilmen. Okay, I'm pulling out, oh, Councilmember Bertrand, do you have a question? And you're muted, councilmember.
We're considering a roundabout at Capitola Avenue and Bay. Doing that section up to Capitola Avenue, does that warrant it? I mean, it's a timeline thing, that's...
It's a timeline, I mean, in all honesty, the, the roundabout at that section, several years away, and that road section is in pretty, in need of some attention. So I think it would be money well spent at this time. It's only a, a seal, it's not repaving it. By the time we get there, we'll have a good use of the slurry seal that was put in, or the tape seal. So I, I don't think it would be worth waiting for the project to get done. At that point, we can come in and probably, we'll do some paving in that area anyway to make the new roundabout merge in well with the, with the old street.
Okay, thanks. You know, the section on Bay Avenue next to, you know, across from the, I guess, the, you know, there's office buildings, and then there's the Nob Hill area, there's a lot of congestion there. Are you going to be looking at the striping and try to help that, like people coming out near the car wash, that kind of stuff?
Yeah, all this striping will be refreshed. We would refresh the crosswalks at Bay and Hill, which are painted crosswalks, which have significantly faded at this point, so it would help that intersection a lot.
I think there was a plan, maybe part of the general plan, there were some islands being considered, and maybe tree planting and such in the center. I don't know if that's something that you're familiar with, or you probably were part of that planning anyway.
I have to admit, I don't remember seeing a plan to add a median on, on Bay Avenue, certainly something we could look at. We wouldn't want to, that would, you know, change the project and the funding quite a bit from a tape seal, slurry seal, to adding medians and, and doing that, so that would change the funding requirements quite a bit, but something we'd certainly look at.
Well, I'd like to get it done, so thanks.
Any other questions from council? Okay, so we'll move this to public, well, now we'll open public comment for this item. If you would like to make a comment, send an email now to publiccomment@ci.capitola.ca.us, or to speak, please raise your hand now by clicking on reactions, then clicking Raise Hand in your Zoom application, or by dialing *9 on your landline phone. A moderator will unmute you, you will have up to three minutes to speak.
Mayor Brooks, I do not see any attendees looking to comment on this item, and I do not see any emails.
Okay. We'll bring this back to council for further comments and deliberation and a vote.
Thank you, Mayor Brooks. Well, a, a, as I usually do, I just wanted to take this opportunity to, to once again advocate for Fanmar, and maybe hopefully Paris. Those, those streets have been, you know, I think, you know, impacted for a very long time, so that's what I, I would just, and it looks like now that we could tape seal it for $90,000. I would hope that we would be able to agree to do that. I very much, this, you know, I think that's a good idea to get some additional staff help to develop a management plan over the next five years, so that we can do this in a thoughtful and meticulous way, in an appropriate way to increase our pavement management index. And, and with that, I mean, if, if adding the consultant and Fanmar, the, you know, our cost would be a million 215, which would leave 177,066, if my math is correct, and maybe apply to the, some of the avenue streets as recommended by staff. It probably wouldn't go to all of them, but I'm sure that they could figure out which ones are in the greatest need. And finally, I mean, just honoring the email that we got concerning that section of 38, I would recommend that we at least put that on our master list for analysis, and just keep it on our radar, and, and when we have the ability to, you know, move it in, in the appropriate position to be repaired. So those are my comments, and, and let's take a moving us forward, I would like to make that as a motion.
Councilmember Peterson.
I just want to clarify, part of Vice Mayor's story's motion, to make sure I understand, because I'm also an advocate of getting some work done on Fanmar, it's been, it's been put off for a really long time, but my understanding from the staff report... report is that the, um, the streets that are recommended, along with the, um, the, 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 north of Capitola Street, um, that that alone, and the, and the RFQ with the consultant, that that alone tapped out our entire, um, budget for this. Is, is that, is that correct, or, or no?
No, that was my understanding that it would, and that's, that's why, what I was proposing, that, uh, Fanmar would be inserted, and would, it would obviously supplant, or take the place of, of one or several of those avenue streets. So we could do some, but I recognize that we could not do them all in this next year. Um, so it would be a trade-off.
Do you have a recommendation for which streets you would switch out, Vice Mayor's story, or would that be, are you recommending that be left up to staff recommendation, or staff discretion, rather?
Well, I, I was willing to leave that to staff discretion, I think probably know better which ones are in the greatest need, um, and, and would, you know, respond to that accordingly.
Yeah, councilmember Peterson, if I may, um, we have not quit, done a deep analysis on the avenues north of Capitola Road yet, so the, the number I've implanted there certainly has some room to grow. We can identify and try and bundle the, the project in with other projects to get the most we can with, with the funding that's available. Um, we may be able to do more than, than I thought with the money we have, so, um, I think councilman's story's, uh, recommendation makes sense to me, and, uh, would give us enough orders to move forward.
Okay, I, I feel comfortable with that then, I, I will second that motion.
Okay, so we have a first and a second, and just to clarify that we would be moving forward with staff recommendations on the following roads with surfacing projects of 42nd Avenue, Bay Avenue, Claire Street, Diamond Street, Ruby Court, and the Fanmar Streets, and the, um, the five-year pavement management, and whatever's left over will be put towards the slurry or, uh, rubber cape seal projects of the streets north of Capitola Road, the 42nd, 43rd, 44th, 46th, 47th, and 48th, and Grace Streets accordingly, um, or according to however staff. Is that right?
Sorry, I have, I have one more question, I'm sorry. I just wanted to clarify, if, if we make this motion now, we move forward, and then it turns out, you know, we're not gonna have enough to cover all of this, does this come back to us?
Absolutely.
Okay, cool, that's all, thank you.
Okay, so I've read the motion, we have the first from, uh, Vice Mayor's story, and a second from councilmember Peterson, any other comments? Ms. Butler, did you have a comment? Okay, so may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bertrand.
I agree.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor's story.
Aye.
Mayor Brooks.
Aye. The item passes unanimously, so that brings us to item 10, adjournment. Thank you staff, thank you Mr. Jeffberg, thank you council and participants for being here tonight, please remember to find the good in others and yourself. Good night.
Night.